I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax. Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast, and individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of this videotaping. Good evening, welcome. Thank you for coming out in not-so-great weather. We appreciate it. It's good to see all of you. We're going to start out tonight with the superintendent's report. Dr. Welsky.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Central Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Angeliki Karakoglu. Thomas Husar is the principal. We are pleased to announce that East Brunswick High School has 16 National Merit semifinalists. The 2020 PSAT NMSQT served as an initial screen of entrance to the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. A pool of about 16,000 semifinalists on a state allocation basis were identified. Semifinalists are the highest scorers in each of the 50 states and represent less than 1% of each state's high school seniors. So congratulations once again to these high-achieving East Brunswick High School students. On Saturday, September 11th, current students and alumni of the East Brunswick Public School Band Program and staff members performed at the township's 9/11 Remembrance Event. It was wonderful to see these musicians come together to support the members of the township as they shared their stories on the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Fall sports teams are off to a great start. Many of our varsity teams are listed at the top of the GMC and/or state rankings. This has all the makings of a very exciting end of season for many of our teams. Our athletic participation numbers from middle school to varsity are very positive, and we are very fortunate to have the field facilities to make adjustments due to the extensive turf damage on the J. Doyle Stadium. We have played all scheduled games at all levels. Our coaches have worked very hard to adjust practice schedules and shared opportunities to use the lower turf. We've also scheduled many more night games to accommodate the afternoon practices. We are thankful for our parents and fans who have shown tremendous support at both home and away athletic events, even though they've been scheduled at other venues. And we are working as fast as humanly possible to expedite any claims process, complete the required engineering and bid specifications for a complete turf replacement. Inspections revealed that repairs, if they were attempted, could not guarantee the safety of our athletes. I would like to conclude by thanking the entire East Brunswick Public School staff who are making adjustments every day to make sure each day is the best it can be. To our families for supporting our reopening and being patient as we resolve each of your concerns. And finally, to our students who have demonstrated a resilience that is the hallmark of East Brunswick Public Schools. It is great to have you all back. And working together, I have no doubt that we can overcome any obstacles and make this a safe and successful school year for every single person. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to, if I could for just a moment, or do you want to make a statement first?
No, go ahead, no.
Because I have Danny. You got a chance before the meeting to meet our newest administrator.
Yes, you're the superintendent. Go ahead.
Oh, you're the board president, too.
You're older.
So you said that I'm in charge? Is that what you're saying?
No, you're older.
Oh. Danny, would you mind introducing our newest administrators?
I would love to. Thank you, Dr. Welsky. And thank you to the board for allowing me to do this tonight. I am so proud to introduce our newest administrators to you tonight. First, we have Merrill Bucourtney, who is our K-12 Language Arts Supervisor. Language Arts, English, and Primary Education. She has a background that's deeply rooted in early literacy and reading, and her career began as an East Brunswick teacher. Most recently, she worked overseas as an administrator. And then we have Colleen Canto. Colleen supervises our special education programs across Elementary and Hammershaw Middle School. With a passion for special class programs, she has worked in both academic and vocational programs. Colleen came to the district in July, just in time to help us start our ESY program. And next, we have Michelle DeGrosa. Michelle has-- is a familiar face. She has been with the district for a very long time, previously serving for 16 years as a band teacher at both elementary and secondary levels. Michelle is also a very accomplished musician, and the trumpet is her instrument of choice. Welcome again. And next, we have Judy Diaz. Judy has a deeply rooted passion and personal experience in the areas in which she supervises: world language, English language learners, and bilingual education. Her primary language is Spanish, and she came to East Brunswick with a deep enthusiasm for the diversity that we enjoy in our community. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
And our next administrator is Frank Malta. After a long career-- 24 years. Long career as a health and phys ed teacher, Frank became the top EB Bear in our district in March as supervisor of athletics. Frank has coached many sports himself: football, baseball, basketball. And as a premier baseball coach, it is rumored that he has coached a future New York Yankee. And we have Eric Meyer. A longtime beloved elementary physical education teacher. Eric was appointed as supervisor of Health and Physical Education this past winter. He now shares his love of healthy living with all of our schools. Thanks, Eric. And Herb Apaloozo, Herb, has been with us since 2006, fresh out of Rider University as a social studies teacher at Hammershaw. He later transferred to East Brunswick High School, served as a teacher and instructional technology coach there, and now he serves as our department chairperson for Social Studies. Thanks, Herb.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Potabicki McGowan. Stephanie began her career here as a special education teacher, worked her way into a basic skills teacher. And during the 2020-21 school year, Stephanie joined the team of Human Resources as our department coordinator. And now she's temporarily helping us at Hammershaw where we have a vacancy for assistant principal. Thank you, Stephanie. And last but not least, a familiar face coming to the central office team, Danielle DiNino. Danielle started in 1998 as a teacher at Chittick Elementary School, later served as a basic skills reading specialist. In 2015, appointed as principal of Centia Elementary School. And most recently, this past August, appointed as Director of Professional Learning Evaluation and Support. Thanks, Danielle. And thank you so much for taking the time to let me brag a little bit about our team.
Thanks, Dani.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We are so happy to have you. We welcome you. The bar is said hi, but we know you will not only reach it, you're going to raise it every single day for our students. And you're going to motivate the staff, and you're going to mentor them. We know this about you. So we are going to be very excited and happy to watch you as you take this journey with us. We welcome you all wholeheartedly. And by the way, Michelle, we do like presentations at the Board, so you can come back with that trumpet. We want to-- Jeff will accompany you on the base, okay?
Yeah, thank you for knowing.
Again, welcome, and thank you so much for coming. Another round of applause. All right, we're going to start off this evening with a presentation about 2021 school opening enrollment update. Take it away.
Good evening. So we are just shortly into school, and I thought it would be important for the Board and the community to see where we are in terms of our enrollment. So we're going to just briefly go over what our projections were versus what our actual enrollment was as of day one with school opening. So right off the top, this slide shows the summary of our projections for the elementary, Hammershaw, Churchill, and the high school. The numbers, when you look at the variances, the variances for Hammershaw, Churchill, and the high school, were very close. Projections were very close. At the elementary level is where we see substantive-- Nick, the system's going to shut down.
Oh, God.
And that concludes my presentation.
Perfect. That was a perfect presentation.
Nick, we did that just right. Okay, so-- so the projections to actual for Hammershaw, Churchill, and the high school were very close. But the substantive change is at the elementary level. We have seen, as of day one, an increase of 167 students at the elementary level. Overall, district-wide, 224 student increase from K through 12. We'll go through quickly the various grade levels. Next, we have kindergarten. So kindergarten, this is on a school-by-school basis. We can see that overall kindergarten enrollment was up by 25 students across all of the schools. We've been tracking class sizes as well to make sure that they are within the ranges established by the Board. There is an anomaly here with regard to two kindergarten classes. But one of the things that I do want to note, however, is that the numbers do reflect additional students that get pulled out of class there in self-contained programs but counted in the kindergarten enrollment. So when we look at Lawrencebrook Memorial, the numbers look high, but they actually are lower than what's here because the students move out into other programs. At first grade, the numbers looked very good across the board in all the elementary schools in comparison to what our projections were, in spite of the fact that first grade enrollment overall has increased by 45 students. In second grade, we have similar situation in terms of the numbers looking good across the Board. We have a similar anomaly over at Warndorf in second grade. While the numbers look like the average class sizes are high, we do have students that are pulled out, and so it actually brings those numbers down more in line to the norms established for the other grades in the other schools. At grade three, our district-wide enrollment has only gone up by two students, and so our numbers are very much on track with what the projections were. And in grade four, our variance of 24 students above projections, and we're still maintaining very close to the class size estimates that we had projected at the time that we were developing the budget last year. And then on grade five, again, a similar situation. We-- overall, the classes that were at grade level increased by nine students over projections. We do have a couple of grades where we're watching the numbers. And just as a reminder, what we would do if the numbers do increase to the point where we're now pushing or exceeding what the standards are by policy, we'll add additional supports into the classroom, and we'd be coming to the Board to recommend the appointment of instructional assistants to add support in the class. And then coming back to our summary, district-wide, on the elementary level, we see where our variances are for each school. The bottom row shows what the projected versus actual enrollment increases or decreases are as of the first day of school. Again, as a reminder, elementary school enrollments increased by 167 students across the Board. And back to our first slide again with the summary. Net increase, district-wide, 224 students. And this is tracking pretty close to what the demographer had projected in terms of what our numbers would be. We saw some slippage last year because of the pandemic and with students not being full-time in school and parents making other decisions for their children. But we're seeing the numbers now come back and be in line with what we were expecting. And that concludes the enrollment update.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernie.
President Becker, if I could, just before the Board asks questions--
Again?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, all right.
So you can see that as we're trending throughout this year, and we continue to enroll-- Karen and her team continue to enroll every single day. You know, the Board's decision to restructure grade configurations for September of 2022 is right where we need to be for September to be able to accommodate this growth. And I worry that we're going to be a little bit behind, but I think we're going to be okay. But we could not have delayed, and you as a Board could not have delayed action on that grade restructuring one more year. So thank you for doing that and supporting that.
Thank you. Thank you and your staff for all the hard work you did. Board members, any questions about-- I say Liwu.
Yes. Based on the presentation, the kindergarten and first and second grader got most variance. Is there any way we can reexamine the model you used to project to make sure you can provide better projection in future? Apparently, it looks like the young family, young kids are moving to our school district. And the higher grade, there's no big change.
So one of the things, Liwu, is that you'll see on the agenda tonight is the approval of a contract for a demographer because it's time to update the demographic report. After a few years, the data becomes stale. And so it's something that we have to keep up on. And particularly, this is important as we are doing our facilities planning to know what we are looking at over the next several years. So-- because that becomes an important guide. We also need that because one of the things that we will be submitting to the state is the district's long-range facilities plan. That is a required plan. We are in the process of updating it. And one of the components that's required in that plan is a demographic report, what the enrollments are looking like moving forward. So, you know, the short-- that's a long answer. The short answer is yes, we need to have data that gives us more accurate information. That's part of what we're going to be doing with the demographic study. And hopefully, that will bring us on track to mitigate some of these changes. But keep in mind that one of the things that's unpredictable is housing turnover. There's no way to predict what that's going to be and how that will impact families coming in with new children. It's never going to be an exact science. We try to get close. These numbers are pretty close. And you look at it on a school-by-school basis, but it's never going to be exact.
But the problem, the potential challenge we have is the new development. So that will bring a lot of families to Lawrencebrook Memorial, even other schools, elementary schools. That's why I said we need a better model to make better, more accurate projection. Because we are trying to put the temporary school classroom unit at Churchill. So that will be several years ago. But when the number shows that it's kindergarten, fourth grade, second grader, then they contribute most new students. Maybe two years later, there will be third grade, fourth grade, even fifth grade. They will have more students. So that's why we need better projection. Thank you.
Liwu, if I could, one of the things that we did in this model that we presented to the Board for grade restructuring was allowing for some flexibility within the elementary schools as a K-4 configuration. So we'll have some flexibility within the schools for a number of years. So I agree that we can look at tweaking, but as Mr. Giuliani said, the demographer study will update based on most current information and what's projected out for the next couple of years. So I think that will help us refine what we're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Giuliani, thank you for the presentation. The numbers, I understand, and Liwu's concerns, I definitely appreciate. But on a more topical and current basis, these numbers should-- is there a concern regarding the social distancing and all of the guidelines that were placed for the elementary schools? It seems to me that the influx of 167 now will tighten up the classrooms and could potentially change what we had planned coming into this year. And I'm speaking specifically about the safety of the unvaccinated.
So I think that the classes have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And when we look at each of the classes, they really are not significantly variant from what we were projecting. So while there may be, you know, growth at a particular grade level, when you break it down at the school level and into the class-section level, the variances aren't really that significant. So, you know, I don't know that there would be any kind of specific impact as a result of that.
We're able to maintain the proper social distancing as recommended by the CDC guideline for each elementary class. Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing about more variances and updates as we go through the year as our population changes, increases, decreases. You'll keep us updated.
Very well.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you. And now we come to the good of the cause for the public. I just have a few things to say before I open the good of the cause to the public. First of all, this is not a Q&amp;A session. It's not a town hall meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to come and speak to the Board. Please don't mistake our silence for anything other than we're not here to engage in dialogue with you. We're here to listen to you. We want to hear what you have to say. I'm going to call your attention Karen Mandler. Could you just please stand up and raise your hand? Karen, all the way in the back. Karen, by the way, is one of our staff here in the administration building who is one of the reasons why this district is so awesome. We've got a district full of staff like that, and Karen is a fine example of it. If you have questions, specific questions for the Board or the administration, I urge you, please give Karen your contact information on your way out, either a phone number or an email address. And you will have an administrator, the relevant administrator, get back to you. If you don't give Karen your contact information, we won't know how to reach out to you. But again, this is the time for you to speak and us to listen. One more thing. I'll take off my glasses because I'm real serious about this. And sorry to say, I have to say it. We will not tolerate at this meeting any inappropriate, disrespectful gestures or language to anyone up here, to the people seated in the audience, to the people who are watching. It will simply not be tolerated. Any inappropriate language or gestures, you will be asked to leave. There are no second chances. We welcome you here. It's an atmosphere of mutual respect. And we just ask everyone to please remember that. Thank you. Now I will open the public portion. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment in educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Public participation will be limited to three-minute duration. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the Board this evening? Please come up to the podium. Good evening.
Evening.
If you are a student, you do not have to state your name and address for the record.
Well, your address, we should--
I mean, I'm not a student, but I am an alumni.
Okay.
Class of 11, 50th anniversary. So my question for the Board--
May I have your name, please?
Oh, Alexander Spielman, Six Douglas Road.
Thank you.
My question to the Board comes from actually following up with the township. And I wanted to just go to the recipient of things. So earlier this month, I was talking to the Board, the Town Council, about bonds. And one of the bonds that they were issued was to the Board of Education. And they were talking about how it had to do with the fact that the township had a better bond rating. My question is if-- why is it that the township has to do that if the Board of Ed has their own independent budget? And is there any reason why that has to happen about that?
Okay.
That's my--
Thank you very much for coming. I know just the person to get you the answer. I know just the person to get you the answer. Would you please make sure you leave your contact information with Karen, and we will get an answer for you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board tonight? Yes. Hello, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you.
My name is Chris Smalley, and I'm a senior football player for the East Brunswick football team. I wanted to come to the meeting tonight to express our extreme disappointment regarding the stadium turf. I've heard many stories over the last couple of weeks why the field is in its current condition. The only fact that stands out to me was the field was in its far, was beyond its useful life before this season started. Some may try to blame the two topical storms, but really, anyone who has ever stepped on the field has said it's been in very poor condition. Athletes even from other schools have commented during the games how the field is in terrible condition. The header of East Brunswick Public Schools website says, "Excellence in Academics, the Arts, and Athletics." Does excellence really apply to athletics? Right now, the centerpiece of athletics in East Brunswick is embarrassing and doesn't reflect well on the entire East Brunswick community. When I say this, I think I speak for all the athletes and fans. The return to normalcy we expected has once again not occurred because of our poor planning. Our hopes to have ended our high school athletic careers on our home turf was snatched away. This should have been our year to shine coming back from COVID, but instead, we have no field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come. Could you leave your contact information with Karen? I promise you, it will be kept confidential. As a student, we respect your privacy, but I would like to get someone to speak to you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the board? Yes. Welcome.
It's really not this full here, so this is. Lisa Oppenberger, a kindergarten teacher at Warrens Duffer. And as someone who grew up in East Brunswick and a proud teacher, I would like to use my, I thought it was two minutes, but maybe I have three, Bernie, right?
Three minutes.
To thank my colleagues, all 1,300 of them. It's been a very fast, but long 10 days, only 10 days. But the weeks leading up to the school's opening, for my students, my colleagues, and some of them using their own time to clean materials, rearrange chairs, clean the desks, move the desks, staple paper to bulletin boards, test out smart boards, connect computers to printers, label student desks, folders, and cubbies. They were sharpening pencils, loading toilet paper in the bathrooms, filling soap dispensers, replacing light bulbs, testing out HVAC units, some with tissues, setting up dramatic play centers, becoming familiar with student medical and allergy records, calling 200 parents individually to remind them to fill out their child's transportation forms so that they could get home safely, adjusting student schedules, organizing art supplies, phys ed equipment, musical stands and instruments. They were washing pencil marks and scraping gum off the bottom of students' desks and chairs, painting walls and lines on the gym floors, testing out bus routes, wiping down cafeteria kitchens, all in preparation for the first day of school for the 8,300 students. Four days before school opened, staff learned of our assigned breakfast duties that would take place during the first 20 minutes of our prep each morning. The day before school opened, during a religious holiday, we, along with our principals, for the first time, learned of a new outdoor lunch directive. So on the first day of school, East Brunswick Public School custodians, security officers, teachers, aides, child study team, nurses, therapists, counselors, child nutrition, the IT department, grounds and maintenance, secretaries, all 1,300 staff members arrived to school very early, well before their contract hours, to make sure these adjustments could be made to open the schools to the best of our abilities so that our students could have the best first day possible. Because we care, because we love our jobs, and we take pride in our jobs, and I recognize that in each and every one of my East Brunswick colleagues. We are constantly putting our personal lives aside outside of our work hours, not to receive a paycheck or a bonus or even a recognition, but because we want to make things better for our students. And during all of these adjustments and last-minute moments of being flexible when directed to make a change, we see what is said, shared, liked, and mocked on social media. And while it can be hurtful and frustrating, I am so thankful to have my colleagues, my friends, to lean on and to help, and so happy to see them making the students, all of our students, so happy. They are some of the best role models around for the students of our East Brunswick community. The smiles, laughter, and positive exclamations coming out of our kids each day for these past 10 days is a constant reminder of what a strong staff East Brunswick has in our school buildings. I am proud to be an East Brunswick teacher, and I'm even more proud and thankful for the people here. And with that sentiment, I encourage everybody to stop asking what went wrong today and ask your kids what went well and why you're so happy to be around your teachers and friends at school each day, and let's share these moments with our friends and neighbors as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you just redefined the phrase "at the buzzer." Thank you. Thank you for that. And I'd like a round of applause for our staff. And administrator, sorry.
Administrator for our staff.
Yes, well, I'm just, you know, making sure. Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak to the board tonight? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, how are you today?
How are you?
Good, thank you. My name is Lori Ginsburg, and to Chris Quirk. So first of all, I just want to say, after the meeting two weeks ago, that I'm not here to relitigate whether or not our East Brunswick students should be required to wear masks. I'm glad that wasn't even brought up today because that decision has been finalized for the foreseeable future. And while all parents, I imagine, wish that our kids didn't have to wear masks, most of us know that at present, it's just our best chance, along with vaccinations, for keeping our students in the classroom. I would, however, like to thank the Board of Education and the superintendent for making the right decisions for our children. We are lucky to have a board that came together over the last 18 months to ensure our children could continue to receive the best education possible, given the circumstances, and have the best chance for remaining in school, in person, this school year. Now, to be honest, I never would have thought that I would need to thank the board for making the right public health decision, or the legal one for that matter. But I know, however, that we have someone with no children in the district running for Board of Ed on an anti-mask, anti-vaccine mandate platform, someone who is not currently on the board and who, other than protesting masks, has never shared an alternative solution of any kind, much less a viable or effective one, for keeping our children safely in school, learning face-to-face with teachers and classmates where they belong. So this has made me realize that I owe you all a debt of gratitude. So thank you. I hope that we can maintain the school board with its present members so that we can continue to have leaders and decision-makers in place who will continue to work together to strive to make East Brunswick schools even stronger as you make decisions regarding curriculum, public health, and the myriad other decisions we count on you to make each year. As has become clear to me over the last couple of weeks also, is that we need to maintain our current board so we can continue to offer a curriculum that exposes our children to multiple sides of controversial topics and a district that values all children in our diverse community. I also just wanted to say, on behalf of many of us in the community, that we know that Dr. Valeski has a big job as superintendent of a large district, and we appreciate what you do, and we believe you earn your compensation, and we appreciate it. So thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Good evening.
How are you today?
Good, thank you.
Drew Morrison, 13 Main Street Court. I should be able to get this in. I cut it down.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Drew Morrison.
Thank you.
I should be able to get it in. I cut it down from 25 minutes, so I should put it in. Two points I'd like to make. One, I want to talk about my concerns around the board's lack of maintenance and capital improvement on the stadium and the other outdoor facilities. And then my vote of no confidence in the board's ability to properly maintain the facilities that we entrust you guys with. So Tuesday, I took the opportunity to visit the field. I actually didn't even know that this meeting was occurring. Walked around, and when you walked across the field, especially in the area where the damage is, right, where the bear is, you can see places where the turf is missing. It's just the black section of the material that holds the turf together. That's not safe. You can see as you walk across the field, all over the place, just the uneven wear and tear on the field. That's not safe either. As I'm walking off the field, I'm down around the 5, 10-yard line, okay, and I took a step, and I heard a crackle. Now, it's not the crackle or the crunch that you hear when you normally walk on the black stuff, right, the crushed-up rubber. This sounded like it was a leaf that fell in the fall. I thought I broke the turf. That can't be safe either. The good news is, we've dodged a bullet. I haven't heard of anybody who's gotten seriously injured playing on a field with conditions like this, and that's the good thing. The sad news is, this board is projecting the wrong attitude about athletics, about the athletes, and about the families of the athletes. You're projecting this opinion that really doesn't matter. You stretched out the lifespan, an eight- to 10-year lifespan on a field of 15 years, with disregard to the safety and a mitigating plan. You guys should have anticipated, budgeted for, and had a plan in place to enact as soon as this happened. From what I'm hearing, you did. And with no disrespect to Ulbridge and Sayerville, anybody who's ever worn a green and white jersey would never agree the mitigating plan is to have them play their home games outside of East Brunswick. That's not a plan. I hear of a bigger plan in the works. My kids are out of school four or five years now, so I'm not paying close attention to this stuff anymore. This leads me to my second point. I was on a committee.
Time's up. That's it. Three minutes are up.
Okay. Thank you very much. If anyone else is interested in the other point, like we had to talk to you about afterwards.
Sir, could you please make sure that you give Karen Mandler your contact information?
Sure, move.
Please, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board tonight? Welcome.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Garth Smalley, 41 Landstown Road. So I'm the father of the young gentleman who spoke. I wasn't going to speak, but here's the facts. As Mr. Morrison just pointed out, there's been a lack of preparation. These seniors who are here in one junior, they lost a year last year. They were coming back this year, all grades, all teams, field hockey, soccer, football, everybody. They've lived for this. Everything was taken away from them. They had this opportunity to come back. The lack of preparation is hard to believe as a tax-paying citizen of this town. We all understand why our taxes are what they are. We have an excellent school system. Our athletic programs are also very important. It doesn't seem that way. And that is just disturbing. I know that one of the members of your board has an athlete there. Fortunately for them, they don't run on the soccer field, football field, lacrosse field, the stadium field. They play on the stadium, they play inside in basketball, and they run in cross-country. And they do have the opportunity to do that. The fact is, if you do the research, which I've done, it takes 28 days to replace the turf. I forget how many days it's already been. I should have done that research. Like I said, I wasn't going to planning to come up here. But it should have had a plan in place, and that's on all of you. You all need to look in the mirror. I'm done before my three minutes.
Thank you, sir. If you wouldn't mind giving Karen your contact information, sir? I'd like to have someone get back to you.
Yes, she has it.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. Dr. Valeski, I, we have students in the audience tonight who, I'm sure, have homework and a lot of things to do, and we're here because of the students. So I'm wondering if perhaps some of the things you said in your superintendent's report would bear repeating.
Absolutely.
Perhaps they weren't heard, or perhaps you could explain it in a different way?
Certainly.
I think it's important for our students to hear.
Well, I'd like to address our athletes and the athletes' families. First and foremost, we care about our athletics. We care about you as athletes. There is no way that we could have forecasted this storm was going to do this damage to this field. The one thing that was said tonight was the field, the turf, has exceeded its typical useful life. We knew that, but we also maintained the field. And the damage that is seen after the storm, I can attest to you, was not there before the storm because we had a variety of activities. The latest mass gathering we had before you all returned to school was graduation on that very stadium. But we are where we are, and the process for a governmental agency to go through and actually bid this process because it is a significant investment, we have to do a formal bid, there have to be specifications, engineering work that has to be done. But we suspect from the initial inspection that we may have a drainage issue under the turf, which in fact caused the problem that we're seeing now. That is a major issue that we have to make sure is resolved before we replace the turf. We want to make sure that you have a great stadium to play on, and I understand the frustration of being a senior. I understand the frustration of being the parent of a senior who cannot play on their home stadium. I wish I could physically do something to make that differ, but I cannot, and we are doing the absolute best we can to expedite this process. We have filed insurance claims. We have filed a claim with FEMA. We have done everything humanly possible to make sure we can move this process along. The one thing that wasn't mentioned tonight that I do want to mention is that our investment in athletics has shown up in the uniform replacement that we continually do. This board continues to invest money in a rotation of uniforms and equipment to make sure that you have some of the best stuff to play with. And I acknowledge the field was beyond its useful life. That cannot be denied, but we, this is a many-faceted process. Mr. Giuliani, what do you anticipate, what was the value of the field when it was originally installed?
Oh, the entire project was actually several million dollars for the entire project.
So that is where we are at the process, and you have not heard much about it because behind the scenes, we are working with all the professionals to try to move this along as quickly as possible. But we can't give false hope to people until we start to see some results from some of the engineering work that we're asking the engineers to do. But I commit to you that we're trying to move it along as fast as possible.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure your opening remarks were heard again. Those students who are here tonight, again, if you would like any follow-up from Dr. Valeski or a member of his staff, if you're uncomfortable giving your own contact information, perhaps you could provide your parents' cellphone number or an email address, and we will have someone get back to you. Again, you can give it to Karen, if you're comfortable giving your own email address, maybe your student email address. We value your privacy. We're not looking to invade it. We just want to make sure that you get the proper follow-up. And again, I thank you for coming tonight, and everyone who came to speak, and we're going to take a two-minute recess because I would like to give our students the opportunity to go home and either, I don't know, eat dinner, do homework, relax, sleep. Okay? Thank you. Two-minute recess.
No more members.
Board of Education agenda, we have one item on the agenda tonight. Can I please have a motion for approval in minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to our community programs, there's one item on the agenda. Can I please have a motion for Contract Chess Wizards?
Summer.
Moved by Heather.
Second.
Second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to curriculum and instruction, there's one item on tonight's agenda, Contract Living Voices. Can I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mark Two.
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion?
It's a great program.
All those in, I'm so sorry.
It's a great program.
Say it louder, Barb.
It's a great program.
It is a fantastic program. Wonderful program.
Really makes spring come to life, you know?
Makes history come to life. That's a beautiful way to put it. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Before I combine items on tonight's financial services agenda, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion to combine items one through 11?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff. Second by Mark Two. Is there any discussion? Jeff, was that a yes?
Yeah, so I want to make sure it's in the same section. I just want to, I would like to highlight number eight, the football event admission I know it's not much of a consolation to some of the pain points that our athletes are experiencing, but at least they can be seen by the fans, friends, family, community, with no outlay of cash and nothing but, you know, fandom, if that's a word, for showing up. So I appreciate that being on the agenda, and I'm excited that this board will approve that.
Thank you for bringing that up, Jeff. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Heather.
I just wanted to add to what Jeff was saying, because we've been, I have two students at the high school, at the high school level, and we've been attending the football games and following where they are, looking forward to Friday. And it's been nice to see the Bear Den growing in size, and it's just every week, it's bigger and more enthusiastic, and they just take that pride and spirit wherever the game is. So, I'm happy that we were able to waive the fee and let more students come out and enjoy that way.
Very well said. Thank you, Heather. Anyone else? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our human resources agenda, before I ask for a combination of items, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff. Second by Mark Chu. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Before I ask to combine items on our student services agenda, is there anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Li Wu. Second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Before I ask for a combination of the items on tonight's transportation services agendas, or anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff. Second. Second by Heather. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Which brings us to one of the highlights of our evening.
No, we have another item, whole business.
Oh, I'm so sorry, that was not on my agenda. Forgive me.
I thought that was the highlight.
Yes, Jeff, thank you. You're right. I was testing you and everyone else. You passed the test.
Thank you. Wow.
Yes, the highlight, and the big highlight is coming. All business, can I please have a motion for Professional Development Subscription Program approval? Moved by Barbara. Second by Mark. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Mark.
Hi.
Sizmar.
I asked for it to be tabled last meeting. I just needed some more information from administration on the need for such program. February of this year, we approved a training inequity program through ESS, a company. And then when I saw equity training coming up again in professional development, I'm always a big supporter of professional development for our staff. But when I saw some of the topics that are coming up in this particular topics on equity, it drew some concern for me. One of the presenters had talked about how they are on a mission to dismantle racial bias in the classroom. And it was kind of directed at, the way I took it, in my opinion, that the teachers weren't teaching properly. One of the other instructors in this program was talking about breaking the cycle of dysfunctional equity. That is basically the teacher is practicing dysfunctional equity in the classroom. We've talked about our staff tonight, very passionate about our staff. So, I want to know, do we have problems with bias? Do we have problems with dysfunctional equity? I think not. And I want to hear from the administration, what would be the need for the $7,500 for this training if we don't have those problems? If we do have those problems, it's going to be a lengthy discussion. But I don't think we have those problems. So, I would like to hear the need for this training.
Mr. Sizmar, the, we've been involved with the consortia for a number of years, and it's an opportunity for districts like ours, similar compositions to ours, to get together to share out things that we're dealing with in our school districts and things that we're encountering. These sessions are designed for the administrative staff, and it gives us a chance to look and benchmark what we're doing internally at East Brunswick against some of the other things that we're seeing on a global level. I look at this opportunity as an umbrella, and we fall under that, and we start getting more specific with our Effective School Solutions, uh, solution. Effective School Solutions was brought in really to do the needs assessment of the district and identify specifically what East Brunswick needed. But we've been involved with this just to get that global perspective and to be able to share out with other people, and to pull some of those things back to be able to implement in our district, because we're always looking for continuous improvement. I'm not saying we have issues, major issues, but this continuous improvement cycle means I think we have to check ourselves all the time to see what needs to be tweaked or adjusted.
Mark, then Heather?
Oh, you sure?
Yeah.
No, I just, I was thinking about what Mark had said, and the part of me that's an educator was, you know, always testing the waters as a teacher, like, is that what they were saying about teachers? And as a teacher, when I had read those things, I didn't feel that way. I mean, I don't teach in East Brunswick. But if someone said that, I would not take that as there's any kind of problem. But I take that as, I think, and I think it's important to build on what Dr. Valeski said, is that when we have this whole structure, we need to constantly be self-evaluating. We need to constantly be reflective of the community around us and differences and other people's perspective. And it's a, it's a very, I've been reading a lot on it lately for myself, and it's a very uncomfortable topic to reflect on. You know, you don't want to be doing the wrong thing. And these discussions, I think, are so valuable in professional settings to let people talk about it. I just think this kind of continuing education is really, really valuable right now, because it is a difficult, it's a difficult place to sort of talk about it and test the waters. And I think everyone wants to be doing well at it, but we need to constantly be reflecting and having these discussions. So, I understand what you're saying, and I think our staff's incredible. But I also think, you know, the continuing education in this topic is healthy. I think healthy is the word I want. Not needed, but healthy.
Thank you, Heather. Mark, I believe, I'm sorry, Jeff, then, then Mark?
Just, I want to clarify a question, Dr. Valeski, on something you said. Did you say that there was an assessment done on, did I just hear you say that some form of an assessment was done to evaluate the level of this, of this existing within the district? Did I understand you, as part of what you just said?
Effective School Solutions, Dr. Figaro gave a needs assessment. This was, do you recall when?
April, April 22nd, 2021.
Yeah, we actually put out surveys to the staff and got feedback from a variety of stakeholder groups.
Oh, it wasn't an outside, it was an internal needs assessment?
It was a needs assessment constructed by Effective School Solutions.
And what was the result of that, that we, that we did, or we should address these issues?
Dr. Figaro has the results that were presented in April.
Remind me.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. In order to continue to be a progressive district, in order to get out in front of issues, we did this survey. There was staff were surveyed, parents were surveyed, there were focus groups, opportunities for people to anonymously tell us what they felt about the district. There was nothing in there that indicated we had problems. There were indications that we wanted to continue to educate our staff and our community. Because as, as Gao said before, that's an ongoing thing that we want to continue to do. So, we have education in the classroom, but we also want to educate our staff, our students, and our community about the diversity, the equity, and the inclusion that is so important and, you know, really a focus of this district. No, I appreciate that, but a lot of what I just took from that is there is no problem. I like to think that the administrators that line this front row tonight, it would be within their scope and purview to identify issues should they arise, although I've just been told they're not here. And I would much rather default to a human being who's within this district before I would feel it even appropriate to bring in outside. It sounds to me like we're pretty, doing a pretty darn good job, and I'm encouraged by the group that sat in this front row, and hopefully their skill set is such to identify such biases, if they exist, which, which I've been told they do not, before I would go out and do blanket training on an imaginary problem within this district. I just don't see, has been reinforced, any need that would go further than the abilities of the individuals and others that aren't new within their department head. And tell me why this isn't their job first?
Well, it is part of their job, but we all continue to be trained and retrained in that. So, that, that is not something that, that the world, I can tell you, let me tell you from my personal perspective. The world continues to change from my, my seat. We have diversity that changes in our district literally every day. And so, the composition of our community, the expectations of members of our community, from a cultural, religious, ethnic standpoint, there, there has to be, we have to check ourselves and have to have an understanding of how they view the world. Not that we're doing something wrong, but basing our, what we deliver, how we deliver it, with a sensitivity that we are all inclusive. And I think that, this, this course of study through the consortia is not really, that is not tied to Effective Schools, School Solutions. It's a separate, independent activity. The piece on the agenda tonight is really about bringing districts together through the University of Penn and facilitating discussions among districts about issues that we're encountering real time. So, that's, that's part of the global perspective. But, but we talked to the board about our equity training, and tied to mental health with Effective School Solutions, as part of the budget cycle, and that was part of what we, what the board approved under Lou's department for this, this year, and a focus for this year, was to look at equity and how we could provide that professional development to staff.
And I appreciate that, and that, and that makes total sense. But then I have to ask myself, are there other needs that actually are prevalent right now within the district that would deserve what's already a tight budget and attention? I would much rather see mental health issues being, being addressed and stepped up with a reworking of the guidance department to recognize our current environment far faster than I want to address an imaginary problem that does not exist in our district. I think, I think it's a prioritization issue. I'm not saying it's not valuable, but I am definitely not saying, I'm definitely saying it's not a priority. At this time, I just don't see it. It's not here.
Excellent.
Are the teachers given some input on this? Meaning, do they have a survey saying that they like this type of training?
This is an administrative training.
So, are they given any feedback on their, you know, need for it, or how they're feeling about it?
We have, there's a session at the end of the consortia series where they, they bring people together to talk about the effectiveness and how it could be improved for the next year.
And what are they saying about?
I, I don't know what the results of, of that result.
Because that's important for us to know, like, what they're experiencing from.
If I may.
Sure.
There was a survey of the staff who received the training, and overwhelmingly, the staff appreciated the ability to talk about and think about deeply, you know, a topic that, that is difficult. And as Mrs. Gwos said, it is healthy for them to have continuing, ongoing support and professional development and learning opportunities to keep, you know, relevant and, and to understand best practices and engaging in, in this. So, the, the staff feedback was that they really liked the training and they appreciated the training.
Barbara?
So, and per, and another thought is, perhaps there aren't as many problems, because our teachers are offered opportunities to this kind of learning so that they know to handle these issues better when they do come up. So, I feel like offering them all the, you know, capabilities and abilities to have the best training makes their, their lives better and makes their ability to teach better.
It is a proactive measure in the sense that we're very diverse, and ensuring that our classroom environments are inclusive for all of our students and culturally responsive is, is, is a priority.
I just, Heather. I just wanted to add to what Jeff was saying. These two things really go hand in hand. In the classroom, having equity training and having training towards inclusivity increases, it increases the positive culture in the classroom and the health, and this parlay's directly into student mental health and the way students feel about school. Like, these really are a nice fit together. I mean, I know mental health is always in the forefront for you, and for me, this particular topic, for students that I see that are quiet minorities, this has a huge impact on how they feel in school when teachers are positively trained in this and have the opportunities to discuss this in, you know, professional development. It, it has a really strong ripple effect on mental health. I mean, it's hard to, I think I'm finding, I'm having a hard time finding the words, but the two things really do fit beautifully together.
Oh, and Ms. Gwos, I totally understand the relationship, and I believe that certain districts where that what you just stated would absolutely be true. But I'm talking about this district. I mean, there are many things that I would want, I'd love to learn how to train a lion, but I don't expect to get one. You know, it, it's, it's just, it's a great program for districts that are experiencing issues relative to this curriculum that I did see on the PowerPoint. I think it's wonderful, and I can think of many, many communities that would benefit from this. In the 41 years since my graduation, I have never, ever once in this town heard that we have an equity issue in education, yet we're teaching to, or we're training to it. I'm not saying it's not valuable, it's just, it's just not here. It's not, we don't have a lion. We don't have a problem. We just don't have it. So, whatever we're doing on our own has been effective, at least since 1980 that I can recall. I ju, I, I think it's a great program. For 7,500 bucks, I, I can tell you, I can think of at least 15 more pressing things that we could spend that money with our tight budget the way it is. And if money ever frees up a little bit better, or we, or we have those funds available, and by the way, we identify the issue, have at it. I'm not opposed to the program, I just don't see it fitting here.
Thank you, Jeff. Susanna?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Mrs. Reese said. If we wait till we have a big problem and then we do the training, it's too late. So, I think the importance of proactivity, proactivity and training in advance of a big problem makes sense.
If the administrators believe it's helpful.
I'm sorry?
If the administrators believe the training's helpful, I don't know why we would be against it.
Why and what?
Why would we be against the training if the surveys that they're giving back say that it's a, it's a good thing? I, I see both sides. I agree with everyone, you know, because I'm a Libra, but, but being that, I see Jeff's side, and I see, you know, Barbara's statement was very pertinent.
May I just add one?
So, I.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add one more thing, because I know we've talked about a lot of different sides here. You have to also remember, although we may not, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Winston, we pride ourselves on not having these problems, but they're, they're out there. Our students who are in our district, we have to remember, they're going to go out to jobs, they're going to go out and play other teams, they're going to go out and perform. So, to have this type of training where our teachers are sensitive to them and helping those students, our students, the ones who may be included in groups, but now they're learning from their teachers how to even include others into their, to their fold. So, now, you know, we're, we're actually giving them the tools, our, all of our students, so that they can be even more of a success after high school. So, this really is in, in step with what we've tried to do as a district, with, you know, excellence in academics, the arts, and the athletics. Now, this does have to deal, as Ms. Gao said so eloquently, this does have to deal directly with mental health and community. And I think this is, this is really what, the, you know, the benefit of this type of program and this consortium. I'm not saying it's not beneficial, I'm simply saying that it doesn't exist. I'm not saying it's not beneficial. I, I, go get that training in the private sector, as I do every two months. They will get that.
Very well said, Lou, by the way. Thank you, Jeff. I just wanted to say something. Mark, I, I think you made a very good point about forgetting the positive feedback. But I am going to respectfully disagree with one thing you said. I don't think this is a matter of sides. I haven't heard anything from anybody up here that doesn't absolutely tell me that it's coming from a place of the best thing for the staff and our fiscal responsibility. So this isn't a matter of sides as much as looking at different things and moving parts in a global picture. I think that everyone up here who spoke is coming from a place of the district's priority.
Well, it's a disagreement, really.
Right. But, so, that being said, I, I, I don't think we should avoid things because perhaps we think they're unnecessary. And other people have said this better than I'm about to say it, so I'm not going to dwell on it long. But I, I do think that an opportunity to provide tools for the teacher and a forum for discussion about an issue that can become divisive and affect the mental health of not just our students, but our staff is important to engage in. And again, other people have said this more eloquently than I have, so that's what I have to say. Heather?
I just, so I'm coming from a different perspective because my family, we're kind of the poster children for this in a lot of ways. And so our experience will be different coming through the district without a doubt than yours was coming through yourself or maybe your own family. But I will say that it's, it's a fantastic tool. It's a fantastic training to have as a teacher when you're faced with situations where they're difficult and they're hard and you're not, when you're not sure what to do or you're not sure how to approach something, that's the worst feeling. And an even harder feeling is feeling like you don't have the tools, so you shouldn't approach it at all. And I've already had, you know, my youngest has just entered the district and she will need teachers that have had this training. She will. And we have already had discussions with teachers about, you know, like, this is, this is where we're different and this is where we need your help. And the teachers are open to it and they've been amazing. And I know that I feel better for her experience coming through that she will have staff that's well-trained. This is new. This is not stuff that, stuff is terrible. This is not curriculum from when I went through an education program. This is not curriculum that was taught a few years ago. So it is, I think, so beneficial. It's not just proactive, it's just beneficial to all involved, especially, you know, if you're looking at the students that are coming up that are of minority background in any way, this paves the way for them, I think.
No, and those are, those are great points. And I'm not disagreeing with what you just said, other than to say simply that the demographics of this town has changed unbelievably in 41 years since I went to school, where I think we had six minorities at the high school, eight maybe in my class. And with that change, this entire time, this issue has never come up. However, what is coming up right now are issues of mental health, are issue of students going through this COVID thing, of teachers going through this, of transitioning back in, concerns about what's happening in the home when we were in a hybrid or virtual. Those issues already exist. So we could talk about things on the come, or we can actually address what's hap, I'm not saying these things are very important, but they don't exist. But if there are things that exist, that $7,500 of training could certainly address. I'm not discounting its value. I'm simply saying it just doesn't exist, but other things do that we're not funding. So this would take away funding of problems that are already here. And when we have the money, when we have this level set in this township and there is money available for things that don't exist, but we want to be ready for on a proactive basis, you got my yes vote. I think it's a great idea, but it just doesn't exist. It's, 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 I mean, you know, we're fighting windmills here. It doesn't exist.
Dr. Valeski, do you, and if you can answer tonight, because you don't have the figures in front of you, like, you can absolutely get back to us. But can you please tell us if there has, you've had to make a decision where spending the $7,500 on this was, we couldn't spend it somewhere where else you wanted to, or at the expense of the, the mental health support that you've been putting in the district?
I can tell you that without looking at actual numbers of where our expenditures are.
Yeah, because you could.
We have, we have not made a decision to curtail or not provide a service. That doesn't mean that we can't continue to always look and expand, but we have never, we have never denied, nor have we intended to deny this year services or even begin to look at expanding services in the next budget cycle to support both of our students, our staff and our families.
Have we, have we come up with any professional development for students who feel short-changed as seniors that were juniors and losing a year and a half of their high school and had to transition back into college, or transition into college? Is there anything that we've addressed around that? Has there anything been addressed around elementary school kids' fears that their parents are instilling them regarding vaccines and masks? A problem that exists right now. Have we had professional development training in that? Because that's a problem right now.
I, I would, I would be honest with you, Mr. Winston, that we haven't had formalized professional development training in vaccinations or fear about, you know, returning to school. Our guidance team has been very strong in supporting our students throughout the pandemic. They continue to work with specific students about working with the transition to college. Some students will not need that work. They will not need, they've been moving along and they've, they've reacted very well during the pandemic and they're well positioned to go on to college. But other students, no. And, and so that's one of the issues that the presentation that Jamie Kennard presented at the last meeting was talking about, our holistic approach to students. Not every student is college bound and not every student will.
Understood. Or it could be just going against society.
Yeah.
But I like what you said because our staff really, even without professional development, handled it quite well, which I would then lend the same level of logic to the front row of this room tonight, that our staff is adequately ready to handle that without professional development, if it even came up. If, if it ever showed its, its head in this town. But again, I go back to, it is not here. The things I mentioned are.
Right. And, and, but I will say that one of the reasons why I support this training is that, in alluding to what other people have already said, we're, we're not the professionals in some of these arenas. And so we're relying on the professionals that are showing us what's happening in other parts of the world, other parts of the country, other districts, what they've already encountered. So how are we going to position ourselves to be, we don't want to be reactionary. We don't want to be positioned to say, we have a solution to that problem before that becomes a major issue. And that's a lesson that I think I learned from the Muslim community who came before the board, what was it now, three years ago? And, you know, and, and after that was an outreach to the Muslim community. And I think we've built really strong relationships with not only them, but a variety of other stakeholders in the district. But part of the training that we got prior to that assisted in the way that we approached that solution. I, I acknowledge that we were probably behind that, but I don't want to be in that position again. I, I never want to be in that position again.
At the cost of things that currently exist, we're going to take something of a posture without addressing the things that are currently happening right now.
I would never.
I'll put it to vote. I, I got your point. I, I totally respect and understand your point.
And, and as I respect yours, yes.
Thank you.
Mark?
Hi. Just something that was mentioned earlier. When was the assessment done by ESS? What was the date of that?
Well, we received the results in April, so it would have been prior to that when they started focus groups, Joyce, I don't know if you remember exactly.
April what year?
It would have been December, January, I think, and.
April what year, sir?
Go what year?
April what year?
2021.
Okay. My next question. The professional development in response to that assessment was delivered in February of 2021. If we're paying a company to do an assessment, I, I got my notes here. We had a needs assessment done at $13,800. Strategic planning for $3,200. Professional development, $10,800. How is the needs assessment done and the results delivered after the professional development? How did we know what professional development to deliver? That doesn't make sense to me.
I believe the results were back in January. Lou's presentation to the board was amazing.
I presented to the board on April 22nd. The needs assessment, all of that surveys, the focus groups had taken place in December and January, if I'm not mistaken. So that, that data was collected and put together and then the needs, the needs assessment was also put together.
So the needs assessment, and this is, this is where I'm going to go to now, would show that we need something in the district. Let me bring up some topics that were in the PowerPoint. Systemic racial injustice. Slide spoke about, we need to know the true history of the United States because many of us did not learn the true history in school. A term that I was not familiar with, and I'm still not, I found it kind of in the Urban Dictionary, but I don't have anything on it. Racistism. R-A-C-I-S-T-I-S-M. It spoke about white privilege. And it said, one of the manifestations of white privilege, which is clear evidence that white privilege exists, someone who is able to assume positive relationship with police and people of authority. I, I started seeing things and that's, that was, that was the past training from ESS. And I hope you see where I'm going here. When, when the new training said that this person is coming into East Brunswick on a mission to dismantle racial bias. Another person's coming in to say, I'm going to get rid of the dysfunctional equity in your classrooms. To me, after a needs assessment, after this PowerPoint, which, my next question is, sounds like critical race theory to me with those points that I just went over from the PowerPoint. And again, I'm, I'm kind of, maybe I'm seeing it wrong, maybe I'm not, kind of offended. But when somebody comes in and says they're going to dismantle racial bias in your classroom, to dismantle something means it has to have been built, means it has to have existed. That's not our teachers. For somebody to come in and say they are going to change and expect pushback, because that was in their, their training coming up too, pushback about the dysfunctional equity in our classrooms, these are what the people are saying here. It's, it's, it's right from the website of the training that we're asking $7,500 for. And, and like I said, I know what equity is. I've been to equity training numerous times. Not to speak all about my past, but I was a bias incident officer in our town, very well versed in it, super supportive. I think I found seven things proactively on the internet that could probably save 7,500, that could have saved the $27,000, not to pick on the spending of it, but just please bear with me to listen to these seven things. Reflect on your own beliefs. Reduce race and gender barriers to learning. Establish an inclusive environment early. Be dynamic with classroom space. Accommodate learning styles and disabilities. Be mindful of how you use technology. Be aware of religious holidays. That's East Brunswick. That's classroom management. That's what we do here. We do a great job of it. So I'm not against equity. I'm not against equity training. I didn't see this as proactive with some of the things because it really didn't address that. But I will finish my points. I know I've talked a lot. I think our staff is great. I'm all for monitoring, assessing, checking what's going on. But I made my point with some of these things that they're talking about, they're trying to teach. And again, if you're going to dismantle something, if you're going to change something, if you're going to change a culture, you are saying that that culture exists in our classroom. And I don't think it does. In fact, I know it doesn't. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. There is a motion on the table?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Is it, is it just an all-inclusive?
Yeah, this is not a roll call vote.
Can I ask a question before we do the vote? Mark, could you tell us where you, where you found this information, where you're citing? Because I'm looking through it and I don't see.
Which, which part do you need?
The last part where you were talking.
The website, Mark. The website.
No, no, that's, I said, that, that's, that's not part of this training. I would love for those seven things to be taught. I would love for those seven things to be addressed. I didn't see any, I didn't see that, this I just found on the internet.
Oh, you're just citing another side.
I'm talking about past equity trainings and stuff. To me.
Oh, okay.
What I was making a point was, yeah, that I didn't see any of that in this proposed training or in the ESS training we had. Those seven things condensed, to me, yeah, I would spend $7,500 to come up with a program to reinforce and teach people how to do those seven things. And I'm not trying to make money here and run a training because I've run training in the past, but I'm just saying, those are seven great points. And I'm not seeing them in, in this past training or the future training.
And no, because I want to understand what you're saying because you make, you know, you're pointing out some good points.
Yeah, I can give them to you afterwards.
I'm looking here in the, in the papers that we were given and they do talk about focus groups, they do talk about having academic support materials, talking about how to strategize so that the kids have a more culturally accepting environment. I mean, these are things, and this is just a cursory view that I've received this document today, but I've seen these kind of programs before. And basically, this is to help professionals in the school environment deal with very tough issues. I mean, anybody who's been awake the last five years, there's a lot of cultural issues going on in our world. We have people being beaten on the streets. I mean, so if you tell me it's not an issue and it doesn't happen in East Brunswick, I love East Brunswick, but we're not perfect. Nobody's perfect. And if you don't look at yourself in the mirror and say this area to improve, then you're dead. Right? My father passed away. He said, the only perfect person is in the ground. So that's, we all have, we need improvement. And if we can improve in a world where there's students who are scared to go into a store because the color of their skin, so be it. I'm not saying that, that, you know, that cost is not an issue. I'm not naive that we don't have the, we have, we have to, you know, be cost-conscious for our taxpayers. But if the administrators like it and the teachers like it and it helps them and it's the environment, we're coming out of time where people are afraid to go on the street because their color of their skin or how they speak or how they look, how could we say no?
I, I get it, but we're, we're talking about what goes on in the classroom here. I, I will say, I'm not going to argue that there might not be systemic racism in the United States. That's not what I'm here about. We're here to focus on the East Brunswick public schools, classrooms, the effectiveness and the professionalism of our teachers.
They're very professional.
And I'm not, let me finish, please.
Okay.
I didn't see, like I said, those seven things I read, I'm not seeing this straight. Did you guys read the PowerPoint? Some of those things in the PowerPoint were, were, you know, kind of offensive. And I would love to see, I, I will, I will be fine with this. I would love to see the feedback and I, all the positive feedback from, from that training from ESS. Yeah. And, and, you know, going forward.
Mark, if you have a concern regarding, you have a, you have a concern regarding the presenters and their credential or their stance, or do they have bias in your opinion?
When I read, when I read what the, what the workshops, the proposed workshops are going to be about, yeah, I, I read some of the straight, that these are straight lines from there. And I told you, the mission to dismantle racial bias, the thing about breaking the cycle of dysfunctional equity. If it said, if it was talking about those seven things, I'm not against equity training. I, I don't think, I don't think this is.
But is it the presenter?
Proper equity training. What, what they're saying in their, what they're saying they're going, they're going to share with us.
But who's they?
The, the workshops. I read all the workshops.
The presenters, though. You.
I, I read their, I read their.
You read the presenter's credentials.
What they're going to present in the central region of the consortia for equity, you know.
So that might be more of the issue than that.
That is, that's the whole issue. I'm, I'm speaking against the, the way this is being conducted. Not against equity.
I, is there anything else anybody wanted to say?
I have a question, just maybe that's what Mark is saying is I looked on the website. So you're saying that the speakers that you see on the website, you have, you have an issue with, because what we're looking in the packet is different from the speakers on the website.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I did, I did a lot of research on it. I'm sorry. I did a lot of research on it.
I respect that. I respect that you did the research. I'm looking at it and I mean, you know, it, I don't want to read the whole thing, but it's talking, the one that you mentioned, constructing the innocent classroom, dismantling racial bias for our children of color.
Yep.
Is that the one you're, you're concerned about?
That's one of them.
Because it's a whole list of explaining that basically, you know, I could read to you what it talks about, but it's.
I read it. You don't have to read it to me, but if you want to share with the others.
Yeah, maybe I'll share, you know, to share with the other. I mean, it's, it's just constructing the innocent classroom is a child-specific response to diverse classrooms that is teacher-driven and child-centered. It is a relationship-building process. It dismantles racism and racial bias by preparing educators to identify and positively engage each child's essential motivation and their essential good. And basically, looking at kids is good and that all kids are good and innocent to start with. And then to understand the connection between a child's behavior, deal good and innocence and applying new. and applying new tools, certain kind of questioning, to learn information about their internal life and anticipate their goodness inside them, and to look at them as good from the beginning and not as bad. I, I mean, so I understand what you're saying. I don't see anything about the police here.
No, 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 no. That was an exact quote from the PowerPoint presentation that we're provided before.
Well, that's ESS.
Absolutely.
That's a separate.
The dismantling racial bias is, is exact words of the, like I said, racial bias has to exist to dismantle it.
Because I support the police, so I'm not looking.
No, 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 we're, no. Yeah. My, my focus is on $7,500. I, I don't like some of the topics coming up with this. I've, I've said the things, and, and to me, in order to fix a problem, the problem has to exist. If we're sending someone to PD to fix a problem, the problem has to exist. That's not proactive. This is, this is not proactive training.
You're saying there's zero racial bias, and you're saying that, I'm just trying to understand.
Sure.
You're saying that there's no need to, to prepare our teachers for issues of how to handle how the students deal with racial bias inside and outside of school, and to, you don't think that's a value?
Follow the common sense of my words here. It says, they are talking about dismantling racial, racism and racial bias in the classroom.
Okay.
Okay? Teacher-child relationships. If you're going to dismantle something, doesn't it have to exist first? This does not say we are preparing teachers to handle issues that are coming from outside the district, and, you know, how you, how you can have active discussions with your children in the classroom. The other one about equity does not say this is what to look for if we have, if we, if we start to have dysfunction. It says, if we are to break the cycle of dysfunctional equity in schools, so to break a cycle of dysfunctional equity, you have to first have a cycle of dysfunctional equity. And this, this gentleman, I think it was a gentleman, is going to teach you how to do it. So some of the topic matters, to me, don't fit. If it was those seven things I read, which I, like I said, I gravitate to, that, that's equity. Equity is fairness. That was equity. These are, these are certain agendas that I, I'm not in support of spending $7,500 for. That's all. That's all. I'm not, I'm not going on a world scale, I'm not going on a united scale.
Totally get.
In the classroom.
Totally get that. And I, I, I'm not interpreting it as literally as you are. Another way of looking at it. I'm not interpreting that because something was titled dismantling racial inequity in the classroom, that it meant our, it's happening in our classrooms right now. I took it to mean a topic, a forum, to give teachers an opportunity to discuss how to handle things as they come up. Another valuable tool for them. Not citing that this is going on, and we are brought here to address what is going on. I feel like these are perhaps titles of, of topics or sections that maybe were not worded well, but they're just titles, and that the discussion that it prompts is a worthwhile tool for our teacher. We're going to take one more round of.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay, we'll go around everyone, and we'll, we'll do lasties.
Regarding the instructors, all right? I teach CEUs myself. People take classes because of the teacher. Are we inspecting the teachers that are online with, you know, teaching these classes? Do we look at them and say they're, they're appropriate, or we align with them, or what is the process for, because anyone could, you know, we don't know who these people are teaching the classes. So I think that's some of the situation that Mark seems to be experiencing, is, is the teachers, you know, the presenters. So is there any way that we could evaluate that? Or is there a devaluation process? Or do we need to?
Well.
Mark, I didn't get the idea it was the presenters themselves. I'm sorry. I'm confused.
It's a consortia. It's a state consortia.
Yeah, I mean, you asked me to clarify. It's just, like I said, when, when somebody tells me, and it wasn't the title of the workshop, the one gentleman said that their mission is to build processes to dismantle race, racism in your classroom. That's, that's this one gentleman's mission, not a title of a course, not whatever. The other gentleman was saying, he wants to break a cycle, he's going to teach us how to break the cycle of dysfunctional equity work in our schools.
Okay.
That, to me, that, like I said, I'll say it for a fifth time, that means that these things exist, and these people are going to teach us how to get rid of them. And we're just trying to say that this stuff does not exist in our classrooms. Present me with a PD that says, like I said, those seven points I brought up for, it's better equity training. This is, to me, this is not good equity training.
And again, one could make, one, one, valid, very valid, totally understood. But one could make a point that it wasn't a personal training, you to dismantle the current problems in your classroom. I'm taking it differently. We're going to do one last round of questions, and then we're going to vote on it or discussions, Mark.
Well, again, you know, what's the process of understanding who's presenting?
I'm so sorry.
What's the process for understanding who's presenting? Do we care who's presenting, or who the teachers are?
So, the, the consortia has existed in multiple years. It's run through the University of Pennsylvania. What they do is they provide, we, districts have presented problems that they've encountered. The consortia then, for the next year, looks for presenters on topics that are aligned with the needs of that group. So this has been multiple districts. I know that North Brunswick's been involved, Dr. Bowley, if you remember who else, but, but multiple, I understand. But we, it's about us collaborating. These were, up until last year, we were actually meeting face-to-face, and we were having conversations over tables with different groups of people. But it's the University of Pennsylvania that determines the catalog, the instructors, and they present the consortia to the districts if you want to participate in subsequent years. So we don't get to pick the instructors.
Okay. Heather, any, any last closing remark?
Um, I was listening to what Mark said. I, I think the concept of dismantling racial inequity, I mean, I don't know, perhaps we are not all of the same mindset. I do think that racial inequity is a systematic problem in our country. And therefore, and therefore everywhere. Not necessarily more pervasive anywhere, but that it exists. I was just reading a book about racial literacy, and they talk about the elephant in the room, that people that are experiencing these issues feel like they see it, and they feel like the people around them just don't. And it's very, very hard in systems where you don't hold authority or power. And I, I can understand how that can be difficult for one person to perceive and for another person not to. And that's what makes these conversations so valuable, is that somebody who's not ever had this experience doesn't see it at all. And somebody who does have this experience is having the horrifying, how can no one else know it's here? I am disturbed amongst us, the idea that talking about staff development means that we're saying, oh, well, then you have to say there's something wrong with our staff. How insulting to our staff. Our staff is extraordinary. But we provide more education, continuing education in teaching math. We're certainly not saying our math department's not excellent. And if we're providing them with, it just bothers me so much, the idea that staff shouldn't want training in a difficult area without someone having to say, well, then what are they doing wrong? What's wrong? They should have the train, they should have the tools they need for the most difficult topics. And these are some of the most difficult topics right now. And if some people aren't seeing this problem, fantastic. Good, good. But a lot of people are having this difficulty, and we should give our staff every advantage and every conversation and a safe place to have, and every opportunity to learn what to do, to provide the best education for all the students, and to feel comfortable themselves, because this is hard. That's all I have.
Thank you, Heather. Mark, any last remarks?
Yeah, quick. We did have district-wide training for the entire staff in February, and, and the whole program at the cost. And then I think there was other pieces to it, however, for $27,000. It's not, it's, it's not even a year later, we're asking for $7,500 more for more equity training. And I, my personal opinion is, I like equity training. This is not good equity training, what these people are saying they're going to teach us. And my last and my most important point here is, Nora, I'm sorry, we dragged this out so long.
No.
I wish it was, I mean, I mean that sincerely. It's like the person, you don't want to go in front of it and speak, but, because we look forward to, you know, hearing what you're saying, and you're a student in, you know, so.
Never, never, never.
Thank you.
Mark.
We should, we might, yeah. I know, but I, I know, I had to say that. She's so fantastic.
This is what we're suppo, I actually, this was a great discussion. Okay? This is what we're supposed to do.
Yep.
I thank you for bringing it up. I thank everybody for taking part in it. Li Wu, any, any parting?
Yes, I do. Yes.
And then we're going to vote after we go around.
I agree with Jeff that we have so many things need our support, needed our budget. And I agree with Mark, this training material is not perfect. But I do with, agree with Heather. This is a very, very important preventive preparatory tool for our teachers. As a lawyer, when I defended a personal injury case, my question to the, to the defendant is, why you didn't spend $10 to prevent this from happening, now you're causing millions of dollars lost to my client? So that's a fair good tool to help our teacher, to equip our teacher with their knowledge, their skill, to prepare, to deal, to handle this problem before it's actually happened, before it gets worse. So that is a very good program. So I, I understand everyone's point, but at this moment, this society is changing so quick. Anything happening in other school district may happen tonight or tomorrow morning in East Brunswick School District. So we have to spend this, you know, this money to get our teachers ready when they need this tool. So that's why I support this program. And I do understand we have, we need a lot of money to, for all projects. For example, the, the high school football, the stadium tonight, so they ask money. And there are so many other things that need money. But this one is very important, and this money is well-spending.
Well said. Thank you. I'm, I'm, I've said what I need to say. Suzanne, did you have anything? You're okay?
Nothing to add.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara?
Nothing to add.
Jeff?
Just one point to Mr. Hong. We did spend the money. It was $27,000. We did that. We're talking about throwing $7,500 more at it. Don't think that we're not spending any money on this. We did that. It's done. And now we're doing it again. Nothing further.
Again, I thought this was a really good discussion.
Yes. Thank you.
So, um, this is not a roll call vote. I'm going to ask for all those in favor, opposed, but since we're wearing masks and it's muffles, and Bernie needs to get an accurate, please raise your hand as well as so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Of course.
Motion carries. Good discussion. That's what we're here for.
I do see both sides.
I'm so sorry.
I do see both sides.
So did Mark.
I'm sorry, Mark.
I do see both sides.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay. Absolutely. And I, I didn't.
It's a hard one to, it's a hard one to vote on.
But again, um, there's not a person up here, I mean, yourself, who's not up here because we're absolutely concerned about doing the right thing for this district. So discussions like this are always good. And gives us a chance to really listen to each other. And I, there was a lot of listening going on, which is good. And I think a lot of takeaways, which will help us as we go forward in this area, because I think everybody, use the word sides, I use perspective, it's the same thing, brought something of value with their perspective, with their narrative, with their story about this, of value that we can use as a takeaway to move forward with this training and work with our professional development leaders, with our staff leaders, to make sure that we are coming up with the best thing for the district, for the staff, because the best thing for the staff translates to the best thing for the students. So, good discussion, all. And now, the second highlight of our evening.
The bigger highlight?
Nora, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
How is school going?
Pretty well.
You going to tell us about it?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for your patience.
No worries. So we're all back together in person fully for first time since March 2020, I believe.
Oh, my goodness.
Which is great. Everyone is working together, the students, the staff, the administration included, to have the best possible return to school, again, as we can. One of the things that I'm personally very excited about, we're working on developing the way that the student voice is heard. We had our first principals' council meeting today with the new homeroom representatives that were elected last Wednesday, and I believe that went very well. We were able to talk to a wider range of students than we would normally see at a student council meeting or at the principals' council meetings with just the club advisors. And we were able to get feedback about what we're looking for in Spirit Week that's upcoming on the week of October 21st, and what we were interested in trying to plan for homecoming that same week. And we did hear some great ideas that we're looking forward to try to implement as we go farther with planning for homecoming and Spirit Week and other events at the, sorry, at the school. We are working together, the students especially, on taking ownership of our school year. I heard a bit about being prepared for college, and we are meeting with our guidance counselors, and everybody is caring about each other and helping each other. Teachers are doing a great job of lending aids to students that need it, and just overall working together with one another to help each other. Everyone's doing a great job of wearing their masks so we can stay in school, social distance lunches, that changed a little bit, which caused a little chaos, but I believe it wound up well. We have our activities fair next week on Tuesday. We're having an extended homeroom period, and I believe we're circling the outside of the buildings so that we get a chance to visit, or the students that will be visiting, get a chance to visit each of the clubs and see what they might be interested in joining, which is especially interesting for the sophomores who have so many new clubs coming up from Churchill. And then the clubs have their interest meetings following usually that same week, which is a little bit of a crazy week. But that's very exciting that we are getting to have an activities fair, and something new about it is that it's during the school day, which means that everyone is able to attend, rather than it being after school. And that's all we have for events, and I did just want to say thank you again to the teachers and to the staff. Everyone has been doing a great job, like I said, helping the students and preparing everyone with the new stuff, with the block schedules and the longer periods, and just working together to make sure everyone is as successful as they can be.
Thank you so much. You're so articulate and so optimistic, and just listening to you, you really get a great sense of what's going on. Remind me, the college process for seniors, so when are applications due? When is that, that deadline? Is it November?
So, there are, just from, yeah, just from my colleges. I know there's one that's regular decision November 1st, and then a lot of.
November 1st.
Early actions are around November, October. And then I think the latest goes into like February, regular decision, but usually November to February is where that's all happening.
It's almost, it's almost there.
When is the activity fair?
Uh, the activity fair is next Tuesday.
Okay. We'll talk about senioritis in February, okay? Thank you so much. I'm going to actually start out, if you don't mind, the good of the cause for the board with a very brief story illustrating this district's commitment, long, long commitment to athletics. Bernie, would you remind me, what was the year of the cuts? Was that 2000?
Which set?
The ones where.
2011.
2011? The real, okay. Approximately somewhere 2010, 11, 12. We were hit with, every district, with a cut in state aid. Drastic. I don't just mean like, oh, we couldn't buy a set of textbooks. We had to make cuts that I have, had never seen 21 years on the board. But there were certain things we preserved. And our athletic director at the time came to this board meeting, the next board meeting, after the budget had been approved. And he said, I want to thank this board. We are the only high school in the entire state that did not cut one team. I think we're absolutely committed to athletics. I feel for what these families and students are going through. I also don't want that, anyone to ever think that as board members, we make decisions based on our own children. Some current board members may have kids who are playing sports indoors. I don't have a child in the district anymore, but for eighth through 12th grade, I was an East Brunswick soccer parent and we were out in those fields every day. So it doesn't, we don't do things based on our current, our current makeup, our current kids. And I, I know that that's not what that gentleman was suggesting, but I, there is such a deep commitment to the athletics and the arts in this district. We talk so much about the academics. The only high school in the state that did not cut one team. I think it needed to be said. Thank you for letting me say that. Anybody else? Good of the cause, committee reports, chatter, gossip?
Yeah, the opportunity escorted by Dr. Valeski, Dr. Vino, Mark Corangelo and Lori Lox. We spent a lot of time there, didn't we? About an hour and a half inside the high school. We stood at the intersection of the infamous picture that has circulated through East Brunswick faster than many other pictures by celebrities. And in, in that time, we, we're in that intersection where the three arteries converge like the Holland Tunnel. And I timed it as far as how quickly that, that bottleneck would dissipate at a minute and 31 seconds. And the only thing that really hurt were the four boys that stopped in the middle because they needed to tell each other something very important. So, but that aside, I appreciate the tour. We did go through the lunchroom, the cafeteria and the auditorium. And I guess in response, not so much from the conversations we just had, I decided to listen less to the adults and more to the children. And I spoke to probably between 15 and 20 kids and they were thrilled to be back at school. The auditorium's great because the chairs have backs, was, was a common theme. And they were happy to have trays. And if those are the problems that the children are having right now, they were pretty darn happy for upset kids. So I just didn't see it. But I appreciate the tour. I know Ms. Lox and Mr. Corangelo, I would think experienced the same thing. I won't speak for any of them, but that was my assessment. And boy.
Absolutely.
High school's doing a bang-up job and I'm looking forward to the Churchill-Hamishold and an elementary school to be named later before I get fired for taking too much time off of Mark. So, so, so.
I happen to think that our students are the most resilient out of all.
They're having a blast. They're very excited. So that's my, that's my presentation.
Anyone else? Heather, then Mark?
It's interesting because I saw what you said about that. I had the opportunity to tour several of the buildings that I had just not been in during the summer with Dr. Valeski and took up way too much of his time that day. But I was reflecting when a teacher was speaking this morning, or this evening, because touring the buildings, it was long before school was supposed to open. And the work that the staff was already putting in, the, the administrators that were in working on social, I mean, we were in an elementary school and there was an administrator moving furniture around and blocking it out, trying to figure out how to create the most distance in the beginning of August between tables, you know, if we have this scenario, if we have this scenario. Just the dedication, empty buildings seem like empty buildings until you see the work that the staff is putting into it. And then you can really see the heart. No one's supposed to be there then technically. And yet there was so much work already put in. And I, I do wish that for every single person that's venting a frustration, and I understand the frustration, you know, I've, I've got children, I've got a daughter who's currently not playing field hockey in the stadium. I've got two children that, you know, will play lacrosse in the spring at the high school. But for all of those moments, they're enjoying playing their games, you know, the parents are following, their friends are following, everybody's showing up at their games wherever their games are. They're just so happy to be playing. They're happy to be in, they're like, did you take a picture of the bear den this time, Mom? You know, please. They're just so happy to have these moments. And I do wish that, you know, social media isn't everything, but I wish the people that were enjoying these moments would put it out there for the staff because the staff is extraordinary. And everything that I'm hearing from kids is just grateful to be back, happy to be back, overwhelmed by just the sensation of we're there again. And I wish, I know a lot of parents are having a great experience. I wish they were writing about it more for the staff to see, because the teachers are doing an amazing job. And I know, just speaking for myself, I have never been so tired. I've never been so tired. It is, it is just harder. I don't know why, but this is tricky. And in East Brunswick, they're doing it and just making it work. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Mark?
Part of what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. You said it better, better than I would. I mean, the staff, yeah, is amazing. This whole pandemic, whatever we want to call this going on now, they're working harder. I thought last year was hard for the staff. I think this year is even harder. It's just.
Yes, good point, Mark.
Yeah, I don't know how, and this is a testament to their, to their backbones. I don't know how they, they did not reach their breaking point. I mean, you know, we have staff that go home, they're, they're, you know, sorry, I don't, I can share a personal thing, but they're crying. They're, they're, they are being tested beyond anything. And, you know, that part of it, I mean, it's, it's just amazing what they're doing. And the second part of what I was going to say is usually we like to save the best for last. That's why we have the cake and all that stuff at the end of the meal. I love, Nora, I love hearing you laugh because the best for last, but I think we've done this once in a while before. Can we talk about it and think of a board of putting her on first? I don't know, before, not that's the Dr. Valeski, or right after Dr. Valeski with the superintendent report. There's more people here, people more, like to hear that energy, to hear the student, to hear what's going on in the high school at the beginning of a meeting, I think would be better. Like I said, we've done it a couple of times before and I thought it was well-received.
Good suggestion.
So just for the board to consider. I don't know if it's just something we can change or if we can talk about it.
I believe, I believe it's something I can change.
We'll take a look. If it's not something you can change and it's something that's in the bylaw, we'll make, we can bring it forward.
Yeah, I don't think it is because I believe when Chad had brought it up.
The order of the agenda is stipulated in a bylaw.
If I could suggest, maybe, maybe Nora just tags right along after my superintendent's report in this report of the high school.
Yeah, it could become part of the superintendent's report.
And then Nora could also make phone calls to the community.
And Laura.
I'm not volunteering for that.
Can Karen give her contact information off the question?
Wait a minute. I'm liking this, I'm liking this idea because you know what comes right after the superintendent's report? The good of the cause to the public. Nora can run that too.
That's a lot more responsibility than I'm expecting.
Nora's glowing with all this responsibility.
We're going to immerse you.
She's like.
In being a member of this board. You're doing the superintendent's report.
Do I get to take your chair?
You're taking the parent phone.
Yeah, she wants the chair. She wants the chair.
You're a member of the superintendent's.
No, you know what?
No, you don't get the chair and you do not get the gavel. No, sorry. But you get the good of the cause. Okay. Mark, good suggestion. We can make it part of the superintendent's.
Yes, yeah, yes. Come here, Dr. Valeski. His chair has massage too. That looks really good.
We're doing things together up here. Okay.
Oh, I have your phone over here, Nora.
No, wave it.
And your debit card apparently too.
Nora, put, count the minutes in the chair. Mr. Giuliani can figure out how much you need to get paid at superintendent's rate for the, for the stipend.
All right.
Reach out next to the chair. There's a little handle there. And pull up on it. There you go.
It's like an ejector seat. Don't even roll. Okay, Mark, good suggestion. Anybody else? Because we do have a close, we do have a closed session tonight. Okay. Susannah, quick, yes? I love that. Sit, 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 sit.
Very quick comment. And, and I was thinking about it as Nora was speaking. And goes without saying, the thanks to the teachers and the staff and everybody working so hard to get here today. But it occurred to me that we have to thank the students too for coming back and being so resilient.
Yep.
And, you know, there's a lot of rule changes and, you know, life is different now, but the positivity that you exhibited, I, I just, I think it's important to say thanks to the students too, for their resiliency.
Okay, anybody else? Are we ready to let Nora wave the magic gavel?
Take this home.